All right. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 23. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shane here.
Wayne Miller, present.
Veronica Cal present. Pledge of Allegiance, just to keep it straight. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded. And I Chairman's additions and deletions. The only thing, there are two things, they aren't really additions as such. 2.5, I had wanted to discuss the goods and services policy. And I put that on the agenda. But I, you know, I, I think I put it in the packet. You have it for under policies and procedures. But I wanted to make it 2.5, just to talk about it for the Shared Streets and Spaces grant, because we are going to be purchasing things for that. And then also under 2.6, next meetings. We have a lot of meetings coming up, so I thought it would be good just to put that in there. So that's all I have for that. So I am going to go to, does anybody else have anything else before we go on?
I got one question, Veronica, maybe just. I got an email that was sent out, I think all of us got it, about the cause that there's a problem. How do we go forward with that?
That's a good question. I, I have been on a Zoom call for the past hour, so I, if it just came out, I haven't seen that.
Madam Chair.
Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, on the issue, this is, the Board of Selectmen are the enforcement authority for the unregistered car bylaw in town. And whenever a complaint has come in, it's usually the, the low person on the totem pole on the Board of Selectmen. So the junior most member that draws the short straw, they go out with the chief of police, they review, and then work with the chief on coming up with a recommendation to the select board. So I did talk to Joe about it earlier, and he's amenable to doing it. So without any objection, that's, that's the policy that we've been following on it.
Do we need to add that to the agenda for a vote? Or are we good right here with this?
I think, I think we're good, just because it is just as a matter of course, the, the junior person has always done it, so, and he's not objecting, so I'd say let him do it.
All right, so Joe, are you good with that?
Yeah, fine.
All right. So that's all set then.
All right, awesome.
Thank you. 1.4, public comment period? All right, I don't see anything, so I guess I'm going to go forward with the rest of our agenda. We have a work session today. And in the interest of getting all of this done in the time, in a reasonable amount of time, I know that at our last Board of Selectmen meeting, there was a lot of conversation. I think for this meeting, at least through 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3, I wasn't planning to have a lot of public comment on that. So while we go through goals and objectives, the operating policies for the selectmen, and the organizational chart, because this is a work session, I'd like us to be able to concentrate on it. Are you good with that, Wayne and Joe?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so what I would ask, if people have questions at, at the end of 2.3, I would want those questions addressed to me. And you can do that through this lovely Zoom reaction where you raise your hand down at the bottom. And then I will recognize people with their hands up. And maybe that will manage any public comment better. Any questions or thoughts on that, Joe or Wayne?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. So that said, let's move on to 2.1. Town administrator goals and objectives for calendar year 2021. You should have in your packet, the, I know Jim sent along evaluation stuff from previous years. And Jim, I, I had asked, I don't know if you had a chance to, accomplishments and your goals, to discuss that.
I do.
Pardon me?
I do, yes.
Okay. So I thought what we could do is, I know, I wanted to go, I think it would help if we also had the goals that we have for the town. And then I wanted to go through the form that you sent us, Jim, so your accomplishments and goals and objectives, and then for us to look at goals and objectives that we have for the town. Look at your, the format of the, it looks like the evaluation that's been used for you in prior years. And then I resent out the, the MMA thing on setting goals. So I, to me, those all come together. So that's the process I see. Joe or Wayne, do you have any comments on that? That seems reasonable.
Yeah, as long as I, I'm not quite sure exactly which form we're going to use, but just so I should keep me straight on making sure we're doing the right form.
All right, so Jim had provided us with past reviews that he had, and those were more just for us to peruse how things were done in the past. I'm a little more, I guess, corrective than that as far as goals and objectives. So, so I guess, Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you to go over accomplishments and goals. And so this isn't in your package, Joe or Wayne, this is just.
This is just discussion. And, and to the earlier point you just made, Madam Chair, the documents that you see for prior evaluations, those are just the composite narrative under the Public Records Law, the way that is handled is each board member does their own individual evaluation. They meet with me one-on-one, and then there's a composite compiled by someone. And the law isn't clear, there's cases all over the place about who that someone is. So that's not, that's not everything. That is just the composite reflecting the positions of the three board members together, just so you know that. Okay. So under a document that I was working on, just nibbling away at over the last week or so, and it's really team accomplishments, and I know that sometimes that gets a little hokey, but particularly during this last year under COVID, it really has been all hands on deck. So I just want to make certain that it's understood that I'm not claiming individual responsibility. But I've at least been a bit player in, in these things that I'll speak to. So number one is just managing all municipal functions during COVID-19. Just making certain that we keep the, the government open and the services being provided, and doing so in a way that keeps not only the, the customers safe and healthy, but also the employees. Things that came out of that were, I think, a very unusual thing, but people seemed to really like, was having the annual town meeting and special town meeting outdoors. The recreation program, another thing under COVID that they were able to get certified by the state as an onsite, excuse me, offsite learning location. So they actually qualified it under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is a pretty rigorous thing that they had to go through. Then you had the CARES funds. So these are stimulus dollars that came from the federal government to the state, and then were divvied out from the state by formula. And things that were accomplished so far under the CARES funds. The police department was able to get a civilian alert system, the Code Red system, to be able to notify people of emergent occurrences. They were able to get and have implemented a combination electronic message board and speed limit reader, scheduling software, barricades and traction, traffic direction and control. The senior center got outdoor event equipment for the Council on Aging, Town Hall, all of the PPE and Plexiglas work and other protective measures. Town Hall access control intercom system, it's been one of the things that's been, I think, probably the most effective in the, in the time that we've been dealing with COVID. For those that aren't aware, it's, it's a two-way voice and video intercom access control system where when you come up to the Town Hall, the door is locked, but there's signage that directs you to push the button for the department you're looking to do business with. And then someone in that department can speak to you and guide you through whether or not there's something that can be done remotely, virtually, or if in fact you need to do it inside the building. Considering that we're not over occupancy at that moment, they're buzzed in, and people are able to continue to come in the building and do their business that way, but it gives us a check. Barriers and counter work at the Town Hall, AV system for the Great Hall in order to be able to hold socially-distanced public meetings. We've actually got the bid specs finalized, and we should be going out to bid on that. And that would make the Great Hall camera compliant and audiovisual compliant, so we'd be able to hold live meetings in there and have them broadcast. Moving into some of the, the computer work, the library senior center IT infrastructure upgrade. So all of the infrastructure work over at the library senior center, their, their network has been upgraded, replaced. One that we've had a lot of discussion about and has had a lot of attention, very important rental and mortgage assistance program that's being coordinated through the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust. Then there is police training and interviewing equipment, fire department equipment, ultrasonic cleaners. And from there, we had a very effective budget summit. We have the spending freeze that's been in place, that has helped us in a time of diminishing revenues to make certain that we made the year in balance. We have done, from an IT perspective, over the last year, the implementation of Office 365 for all personnel. Deployed a new phone system. Server's been virtualized. We now have offsite backup and redundant firewalls. And we finished finally the re-cabling of the Town Hall. Work was done on implementation of the Collins Comp and Class Plan, so the plan was finished, voted and accepted by an earlier Board of Selectmen, and is now being discussed about being implemented. Continued to participate as a member of the Administrative Board of Directors for the Shroba Valley Regional Dispatch. We've been involved in the pursuit of regional dispatch of our own, which would be just Townsend, Ashby, and Pepperell. There's been a great deal of work that resulted in the creation of TCAM, the Townsend Community Access and Media. Additionally, a great deal of work into creating the Affordable Housing Trust. The 97 Main Street Brownfields, with funding approved, we should have funding this spring in the spring's round. The project of the sidewalks in the common being replaced. And then ongoing labor relations matters, negotiations, and ongoing legal matters with depositions, document production, and interrogatories. So those are the, kind of the highlights of team accomplishments over the calendar year 2020. With the majority of the, of the focus, I would suggest, being on what it's like to be trying to provide public services during COVID-19. So having said that, Madam Chair, and members of the board, the list of things that I, I've drafted that would be focal points going forward would be to continue to manage providing public services under COVID-19 from a health as well as a fiscal perspective. To work on the grant coordination that's been discussed by the board in terms of the, the grant portal, to make certain that we have a coordinated effort on moving grant opportunities. And to manage yet another tight budget. Anybody that's been paying attention or following this over the last couple of, couple of months or so knows that the current year that we're in the budget is very tight, and it is shaping up to be tighter next year. And looking to be more deliberate about quarterly training sessions for employees on some of the, the big ticket items, like the open meeting law and ethics. And probably looking at extending out to some of the, the lesser types of trainings that are available throughout EAP program relating to stress in the workplace. And lastly, to pursue an internship with some of the local universities, and with focus either on one of the three or all of the three, land use, public administration, and public finance. So that's what I have.
All right. Thank you. So, yeah, these goals can help us figure out what we're going to do here. So I guess what I want to know, I, I have my own list, but before I go into that, goals for the town. Wayne, goals that you have for the year 2021? And I know you won't be here with us for the entire time. But that from you and also from Joe, what are you looking for, for the town?
Joe can go first. I'll go first, I think, first.
You're deferring to Joe?
Yeah, I want to think about it for a second.
Okay.
Give me one second. I wasn't prepared for that, but I have it. I would, just give me a minute here. I know I got it, just got to get it together here. I wasn't prepared for that question.
I, I should have sent something out. I didn't know if I would, I never know when I'm allowed to send things and say, hey, I want you guys to be able to talk about this tonight, or when I can. But I thought, I mean, Jim just gave his goals, and I, I guess I would want them to, to, our goals for him should match both his goals and the goals that we have for the town, so.
I agree, but give me one minute.
Jim, can I ask you a question while Joe's looking? On your last goal, the internship with local universities?
Yes.
Land, I'm, I'm sure I can listen to the thing, you know, the tape.
Land use, public administration, and public finance.
Public finance, okay.
So they're different, you know, for instance, at Clark University, their MPA program, they have candidates that have a capstone requirement
Right.
at the end of their year, and at the, the end of their program. And sometimes it'll be a land use issue, sometimes general public administration, other times public finance. So try to line up, you know, working in collaboration with a university on a capstone, or just working with individual public administration candidates on internships generally that would benefit them and us.
Do you have particular schools in mind?
Well, the, the ones that I'm familiar with that have MPA programs would be Clark, Suffolk, and Framingham State, I believe, is the third. Those, I think, are the three of the larger ones, the larger MPA programs.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I had that out on my desk, and I, I got a feeling I left it. But I, I know there are a few that I really been following and listening to, you know, Wayne and Don. Done a great job, that they were working on a few things that really needed to get, you know, see the follow-up, finish up with. And unfortunately, I do not have them right in front of me, and I'm going to apologize for that. But I guess my biggest thing I would say we need to do and go forward in town is, you know, we've got to get, you know, the harmony of the town to kind of move forward as a group, as a, as a unit. And, you know, all departments work together with each other. I know we're going to be discussing some of the policies and procedures tonight, which really are probably one of my biggest pet peeves that I really think we need to discuss and we need to go over to kind of bring the calm back to the community. You know, with that said, and if I find it in my shuffle while we're listening, I'll come back to it. But, I mean, that's kind of a big thing. We need to, you know, be open, be transparent for the next year and a half, for whatever I'm going to be here, that we really, truly get a community that we can heal as a unit, as one, and move forward.
Thanks, Joe. Wayne?
My big one is going to be one that got voted down, but, street repair. I, I understand that the voters spoken, there's no tax override that's going to happen to fund that. I have heard rumblings of additional grant money. I know we got our Chapter 90 allocation for next year, it's a number which is about the same as it always is. But I've heard rumblings of additional funds that are going to be available. There's grants, or I'm not quite sure what they're going, how it's going to look. But I don't think there's anybody that's going to argue with me that our streets need a lot of work. And doing it one street at a time is not going to cut it, so.
I found mine.
All right, go, if you have more, Joe, go for it.
Sorry about that, guys. I knew, I thought I had it with me. I know that kind of Wayne and yourself and Don did a great job. And, and I think, Jim, you, you touched on this a little bit, the consolidating of the Ashby, Pepperell, and Townsend Communication Center. I think that really needs to be on the forefront, whatever we need to do to keep that going. I don't know how we're going to go about it, but that needs to be a priority as far as I'm concerned. We, we have just finally settled on that senior expansion, senior center expansion, which I think is going to be a huge asset for our community. I hope that we don't ever get in a position like that again as a community, that we ever drag on something for that length of time. I know government moves at a snail's pace, snails pace, but we can't, that, we got to really, we got to reel that in, define that a little better, to make that process easier and more transparent for anybody willing to do donations or any project. Let me just see. I, I know there was some talk about a grant administrative position. I have been sitting here for the month I've been, well, since September, but a lot of talk about grants. And we got a ton of people, and thank you all out there for all the efforts everybody's putting in to try to bring it. But I think that's something, if we can get a grant person that really could stay on top of it, so we don't have a mishmash of a whole bunch of people doing different things. I think that's, that's something that really needs to be taken care of. I know everyone was talking about the cash process that we have in town. I heard that when I first was sitting in, but I haven't heard much more about that. So I think that's something that we really, as a community, need to make sure we're, we're doing. And I, I think that's, you know, pretty much so. I just gave a lot, there's a little more, but I think that's where I'd like to see us kind of moving and focusing on.
Wayne, do you want to add anything before I?
I, I'd just like to look a little forward down the road as, you know, post-COVID. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get around this a little bit, you know. And just examine how we do town meeting, where we have it. I know it's traditionally in the Great Hall, but I, I was one of the people that did enjoy doing it outside. It's, I don't know the expense or if we're, I'd be able to budget for that for next year, but I'd look at, like to look at alternative ways of conducting these meetings to get more participation, because it's generally the same hundred or so people. And the big one is get more volunteers. I think that's, we need to promote that. I know we did a couple of years ago, we did a volunteer night. Didn't get a whole lot from it, but I think we've learned some things. So I think that'd be something I'd like to see a little bit more of, trying to get some more people involved, either through the school or, I don't know, that's just.
So I, I'm gonna, do you have one more, Joe?
Just one thing, and I think I've said this many a times on every meeting I've been. The biggest and the most important is we've got to support the town employees. I, I can't emphasize that enough. If we do not take care of our employees in that building, in the water department building, the highway department, the parks and cemetery, if we don't take care of them, we are doomed for failure.
So I'll, I'll, I can build on both of yours, because that was one of mine. Get the union negotiations completed so that our employees have a fair contract. So that, that goes off of yours. So that was one of mine as well. So we're, this is, this is working out. And going with something that Wayne said, the volunteers, I have get all committees staffed. I would, I would like to see the Disability Commission staff, the Ag Commission staff, the capital planning needs to be staffed, all, all of those committees and commissions that we have. Get enough volunteers and, you know, and more people volunteering. As opposed to the, you know, there's a lot of people that have volunteered for years, and it's, it's great. But it's time for us to get a wider net out and get more people in, and we're starting to do that, even with Dalton, who's on this call and not speaking. But, you know, to get people on, get all our boards staffed with volunteers. So I agree with that one. One other thing, I would like to see this, all documents in town up to date. And, you know, the master plan up to date, the Open Space and Rec Plan Committee. And we've been, we've started on both, we have those in the works or whatever. The ADA plan, talking about grants, without an ADA plan, it's, it would be an advantage to have a, a current ADA plan. I have other ones here, Energy Master Plan, Water Master Plan, and of course, the MVP Plan, which we just accepted at our last meeting. That one is in there already. So I would like to have all of those documents up to date and to have working committees working over the next five years to keep them up to date. Just generally, always someone looking at these, so they don't get behind in the future. The other thing, and this is, might have been more, I'm looking at your goals here. Jim, this might, you had mentioned that one of the accomplishments was IT Office 365. I would like to see that implemented fully. I think we should have all documents shared, and all boards and committees should have, have town email addresses, especially the elected boards. Should have town email addresses, and the documents that the respective boards use shared so that they can go through them. And I am also a proponent of shared calendars, so that that helps with communications among and between boards. So that's something that I have. And I think my last one was the budget policy. I would like to see, see that followed more closely to the T. I understand the COVID, you know, put changes on things for last town meeting, and also the delay in budgeting because of COVID. and also the delay in budgeting because of COVID. But I think going forward, it would be great to have, um, the budget. There's a calendar that goes with that and to, to follow that to the, as best as we can. So that's my last one. Other one I have is, I, I think, Jim, this is something that you talked about. Well, it has more to do with communication between boards, meeting with all the boards on a, you know, maybe quarterly basis or semiannually, just to get a sense of, and there's other ways you can do it, you know, more, uh, the liaisons more, but it gets hard to do that. So, looking at that. Joe, go ahead.
I just, you, you touched on about getting things up to date. I, I think a huge problem we have in this community is not getting out the minutes, not getting out the minutes in executive session, not getting the transparency. I really feel if we can get the transparency back, get all this stuff out in front of everybody, we will be able to keep and retain great employees or even have somebody interested to want to come to Townsend. Right now Townsend is not one of the most favorite places I hear that people want to come apply to Townsend. But let's change that. Move forward like Wayne said, let's leak ahead, let's move forward and be positive.
Anything else? Anyone wants to add to this? All right. What I think I'm going to do, and, and we're going to keep on moving forward, but I want to take all the things that were mentioned from the four of us. I'm going to write them up and send them out to everybody. And, uh, we're going to have a further discussion at, I don't know about the, at another meeting to set those actual goals. But what I'd like to do now is go to, um, there was a blank copy. Jim had written on it, blank copy, at least on mine, it says blank form. I'm assuming that was something that you wrote on there, Jim? I don't know.
Yes, blank form.
Blank form, okay. So what I did with that, it gives you the nine performance criteria, if I remember right, or whatever. So I, I, okay, you can kind of see what I did. I scratched out everything, all those words down there that are underneath. So I think legislative relations, public relations and communications, budget preparation and administration, managerial skills, direct supervision of town organizations, personal and professional growth of the administrator. We didn't talk about that a whole lot, Jim, but we can come back to that at, at the next meeting that we have on this. Productivity and reliability, job knowledge and initiative. I, I don't know about that one. I, um, I kind of, but we can talk. Number nine, goals and objectives. What I would do instead of the goals and objectives is under each one of these numbers, I would write a SMART goal. And SMART goals are in this. So I would take the goals and objectives that we just talked about, agree on them. What are the things that we can agree on them for the town going forward? And then, let me see which page it's on. And then write a SMART goal that fits under these evaluation criteria. And, um, uh, and that is, okay, let me get to the page. It's, uh, the fourth page in, it's slide number, um, 13. Use the SMART goal outcome. So take what we have, what are the things that we can measure on? In other words, the SMART goals need to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and time bound. So think about the, the, um, the goals that we've talked about for the town and that Jim has for himself, which are essentially town goals, all of them.
It was all messed up too.
Pardon me? Someone's unmuted, I guess. Anyway, all right. So look at those and see how we can write a SMART goal for each of the objectives that we have. For Jim, essentially, this is what you would be reviewed on next December, Jim. And we might, because it's time bound, it might be that we have a set that are due by August and another set that looks at the budget process, for instance. It doesn't have to be that, but, and, and so maybe we do a mid review to say, yeah, the, this has been attained, this has been completed and roll in a new set. Based, or they get their, you know, this one doesn't start until October, you know, that sort of thing. So that's my thought. So, uh, Joe and Wayne, what do you guys think about?
I, I know you listed, I don't remember the exact number of things you took down there. But some of them aren't going to be able to do, be SMART goals, so they'll get kicked out of this forum. So, um, if you could, or Jim, have, send those, those notes out. We each pick one or two to work on. Because my experience, my experience with goals is if you have more than five or six, it gets murky.
Yeah, I was thinking of one, maybe two, under each of these evaluation criteria. We can remove some of the evaluation criteria if they don't fit with our goals. So, you know.
But you're going to, you're going to send us out all the notes between you and Jim are going to send us. So, because I didn't quite take shorthand and I'm hoping that you guys.
So what I will do is, um, and, and Jim, I'm gonna, I don't have a, a doc for the, um, for this part.
Sending it right now.
What I'll do is I'm gonna remove, I, I'm gonna give everybody, I took notes on the goals and objectives, I'll write them up, you guys, and send them out to all of you with all of our goals and objectives. Some of them are, are the same, you know, I didn't mention, some of the ones that you guys mentioned are also mine. And I'm sure Wayne, some of the ones that Joe or Jim mentioned are also yours. So we have to agree on what they are and then we can think about, um,
Now, just, quick question, Madam Chair. I know this process is a little bit involved and I don't want to throw any more meetings on anybody, but we're going to be coming into the budget process. And that's going to take a lot for all of us to try to. Why don't we just, you know, have set up another meeting as soon as we can? Let's try to just get this done and behind us so we don't have, I don't know about Ronnie, yourself or Wayne, but I, I don't like a mishmash of a whole bunch of things all tried to get done. Let's try to work on something, move on to it, have another meeting, you know? If it's Saturday morning, if it takes two meetings to do this, let's get them done, let's vote on it and move on.
In a normal world, I would say we would handle the rest of this in email. But we can't really do that because of the open meeting law. So, um, I will, you know, and, and then have a vote at the, you know, back and forth over email for, you know, a week or whatever, and then vote on it. But we can't really do that. So what I.
To Wayne, uh, not to Wayne, to Jim. We all send it to Jim and then he can, I, I don't know, is that legal, Joe?
Yeah, but I, I, I think Veronica's, I think you know what you're looking to get this thing to look like. And, and Wayne's not going to be here, as he's already said. So I think it, it's not going to be an awful lot. Yeah, once, I just emailed you the form in a word doc, Veronica, so you'll have that. You know, as you said, you know, pigeonholing two of these under each of those, those management criteria. I, I think, Joe, you could probably at the next meeting or the one after it, at the latest, see a, a good, solid draft. And, you know, if Veronica wants to work with me a little bit on it offline, you know, just to make certain that everything, you know, is, is copesthetic, then that's great too. But I don't think it's a, I don't think it's going to be a, a big time suck.
All right, I'm good with that.
Okay. Um, then I, I think that's what we'll do. I'm looking for something. It was in one of those, um, one of those reviews, what did I do with those? That you sent us, that's blank form, nine. There was a whole set of reviews. One of them said, um, that there were no goal, it was in the middle, that said it was no goals and objectives, and I circled it. And I probably have already filed it in my little pile here. But anyway, that's what I'm going for as far as the final, uh, the final thought goes. So, all right. So what I will do is I'll send out the goals and objectives to everybody. I'll do the other, um, you know, taking what Jim, you know, and, you know, the doc doc. And, uh, maybe what we'll wind up doing is if we all agree, I can write them up. Jim, you can send out the goals and objectives to everybody. Everybody can send them back and say, yeah, I agree with these or I don't, and here's why. Um, and, uh, and then we can go from there. It, it shouldn't be, we can assign, you know, these are, you could even pick, I want to write the goal for these three or whatever, you know, and we'll go from there. Does that sound good? And then another meeting, maybe we'll have something, a document that's ready to approve or, or change. Okay.
I'm good with that. Do we have to make a motion on that?
I, I guess the question is, Jim, in the contract, it says you have to agree to the evaluation document. So I guess, um, I, I think we, the board, should know whether or not you agree to, to this document.
When I mentioned a moment ago that in the period between now and a meeting to consider voting on it, if you and I are in communication on it, we can short circuit, you know, whether or not there's going to be something that really stands out as objectionable in any way. I don't expect there will be. Um, I like what you guys are talking about. I think that is more appropriate than the existing form. I think SMART goals are, they are exactly what they are. I mean, they're smart. So, yeah, I don't, I don't find anything objectionable with the, the concept that's been discussed.
Okay, so I guess we just have a motion for me to write up the, um, the goals and objectives that we talked about and to, um, work with Jim on the format of the evaluation tool to make sure it's, uh, it's acceptable.
I make a motion that we have the chair, Veronica, work on the objectives and goals with Jim and have them be acceptable and bring them back to us.
One second.
Call those in favor.
Phil Shank, yes.
Miller, yes.
Veronica Call, yes. All right. So that takes care of the first item on the agenda. I've lost my agenda now and that is not good. The next one is the policies and procedures. And what I wanted to do with that is focus totally on the operating policies and procedures that we have here. And what I wanted to do is go through it on a, um, page by page basis and say, these are the things that I would like to change and these are the, um, and these are find the way they are. So I, I believe there's a process for doing this. And I think that we first have to do exactly what we are doing here and then we can, um, uh, accept them at another reading. Is that correct?
1602, the procedure to establish policies and procedures. So it says that, that you present them at one meeting and then take them as a second reading before they can be approved unless by unanimous vote, they can be approved right out of the gate.
All right. So does everybody have the policies and procedures that were included in your packet?
Or the 12717 signing?
The correct one. That's the one that.
I would, my opinion, what I'd like to see, take this document and put it through a shredder. Okay? And we should start over. What I, and I have read this and I'm just going to show you. I spent a lot of time on this. And as you can see, some of my highlighted areas, okay, now just circled. This document, when this was drawn up, okay, this is my opinion, back in 17, did the community no justice. All right? This hurt us more than anything because what I have read on this packet, it has pretty much so taken all the power that the Board of Selectmen should have out of our hands. Nothing against the gym, but when they wrote them, maybe they just didn't want to have to work or put the time and effort in that I feel I know I want to put in, Wayne has put in and Ronnie has put in. We need to get back to the Board of Selectmen running the community. We're not here to run day-to-day operations, but God, we can make an absolute disaster of this policies and procedures. I just think shred them and start over. That's only my opinion.
Wayne?
Um, I, I mean, we've made changes over the years, not just this policy, but some other ones. It's up to you guys if you want to, this is going to be your living document that you're going to work off for the next, you know, however many years you guys got going here. So I'm open to listen to what you want to talk about and chime in.
So I guess, um, I think because of the charter and the section 42 in the charter, I think that we do need operating policies and procedures. So to just shred them would be a little radical and would leave us with, I'm not sure what, going forward. That said, I wanted to go through section to section and see where your objections are, Joe. I have in certain sections, I've marked, I actually have two of them here that I'm going to compare because I, there are changes that I would like to see made that might address some of the concerns that you have, Joe.
Okay.
Uh, places where, um, we could look at things because I guess for me, this is, this is what it comes down to. Uh, day-to-day operations isn't well defined. And so, um, I would like to not define day-to-day operations, but to have our operating policies and procedure. I feel like the Board of Selectmen should always know what's going on in the town. And I'm going to bring up, you know, like, you know, and Jim, you might get, uh, you know, you're always saying that I'm, I'm saying things incorrectly. But in any event, 97 Main Street, I didn't know that that was even a thing. You know, that the town was even, that the town owned it or the town was doing anything with it. I think that the Board of Selectmen should be aware of all of these things. And so how do we get that communication so that the Board of Selectmen doesn't feel like we are walking around town not having any idea what's going on? And people are asking, so what's going on over there? I saw town trucks. Well, I don't know. Well, you're a selectman, shouldn't you know this? Well, yeah, I probably should. So why don't I? So what can we change in the operating policies and procedures or in day-to-day process that allows us to know exactly what's going on? Even though we aren't the one sending trucks to 97 Main Street, we should know what's going on with that. So that's one example. My second thing is, uh, when are we, the chief executives, a team? And when are we working individually? And it, it is unclear to me when I can ask things and when I need to have a vote for it. When can one of the Board of Selectmen and Jim meet with a supervisor or a committee or an organization without the rest of us? And how do we find, the rest of us find out that that took place? And how do we find, the rest of us find out that that took place? It, it's things like that that I, I would like to see defined. And I, I think it goes to the selectman policies and procedures. And so I, I'm not as radical as you, Joe.
Well, and another good thing, and then you brought up a good point that, you know, I've only been at this for a month. And I've, I'm going to tell you, the amount of people that stop and ask, and what about this? And I don't have a clue on a lot of it, only because I'm not, haven't been in this position very long. But I've been in the community long enough that I know enough about what really has been going on. And it is alarming. You know, if we have, and we won't use any names nor nothing, but if we have an employee that goes out on any kind of an injury, okay? Yeah, we got to be very careful what is said and how it's said or whatever. But I think the Board of Selectmen need to know. So if somebody ever says out on the street, oh, do you know Joe Bowles on, on disability because he got hurt? Oh, no, I don't know that. Those are things that really are important that the Board of Selectmen, we are elected by the people of the town. We are their voice and we have to have a voice in this.
So process-wise, I mean, I really wanted to go through these and see where you found areas of concern, Joe and Wayne, if you have any areas of concerns and things that I was looking at.
I'm good with that. Let's do it. Let's not, let's get it, let's get it done. Do all we got to do.
So we're starting at the top. I, I'm going to read this because I, I think we should all look at this. "The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Townsend, recognizing the need to codify the traditional and accepted working relationships among the members of the Board, between the Board and the Town Administrator, supporting staff and between the Board and other Town Boards, Committees, officials and citizens, and also recognizing the need to systemize and reduce to writing the Board's operating procedures, hereby adopt the following policies." Any objections? All right. Section one is done.
And just, just in the, for the nature of time, Veronica, reading each of these is going to be much, so I'd rather...
I'm not reading each of these, no.
Okay, no.
But I wanted to read the first one because I think it's important for people to know what the purpose of this document is. So it's just to put in writing how we work.
And then just go through these and pick the ones that you and Joe have.
Okay, so I'm going to name them. And, and Joe, if you have something to say, or Wayne, you have something that you would like to see changed, or if I do, we'll go through it. So 1602. That's the procedure. Good with that, Joe?
I didn't find anything there. That was good.
Wayne?
Nope, this is pretty simple.
02, all right. 03. I'm going to read this one, it's short. "Authority: The Board of Selectmen is an elected board and derives its authority and responsibilities from the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Charter and the Bylaws of the Town of Townsend." We good?
Good.
Joe?
Yeah, I'm good with that one.
All right, you too? All right. Here's where I, at 1604, "Role of the Board of Selectmen", is where I have my first, my first comments.
Me too.
All right. So Joe, do you want to go first?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You want me to go?
Yeah, please.
I agree with the first paragraph. It's in the second paragraph that I, I wanted to look at some changes. So, "The Board is responsible..." Sorry, Wayne, I have to read. "The Board is responsible for supervising the departments of the General Government that are not supervised by the other elected officials. This responsibility is delegated to the Town Administrator and the Board agrees to allow the Town Administrator to provide administrative direction to the departments that fall under the Board's jurisdiction, to assure that the Board's policies are implemented in court, the course of the town's day-to-day operations." So I looked at that in conjunction with, in 42, the Charter. Let me see if I see that. I see that fitting kind of with H, I believe. And, and also with B. So the Charter, which we cannot change. The Charter has to be changed by town meeting votes. So B in the Charter says, "To see that the personnel policies and procedures, rules and regulations are equally administered for all town employees. If a union and other personnel contracts differ, the Town Administrator will see that these are administered according to the contract, with the exception of the Town Administrator's contract, which will be overseen and administered by the Board of Selectmen." So there's that. And then if you look at H, it says, "To inquire at any time into the conduct and operation of any office or the performance of any agency its officers or employees under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen." So I wanted something in here that says, "The Board agrees to allow the Town Administrator to provide administrative direction to the departments." I mean, that, that is fine with me. But I would want to know, "This policy is not intended to limit or otherwise exclude a department head from expressing concerns or issues directly to the Board." I would want to know if there's... I want to know what's going on. I want to know if there's an inquiry. I would want to know that that is ongoing. I don't need to know all the details of it, but I want to know that it's ongoing. And so these policies are where, I can't change the Charter, but in the policies, I can look at that. So that's where I was looking. And then farther down, I, I erased the sentence, "This policy is not intended to limit or otherwise exclude a department head from expressing concerns or issues directly to the Board." And I erased the, "If said concern still exists after first expressing such concerns to the Town Administrator, but rather it's intended to provide a framework for an effective and efficient operation utilizing an appropriate chain of command." So I just cut that sentence out, starting with if. Because I guess what I want to know is if there is an issue, that there is an issue. I think that these policies mean that the Board of Selectmen may never know that an issue happened or that there was an issue. And we don't always necessarily, we wouldn't always know the resolution of the issue either, the way these are written. And that is something that I, I think goes to what Joe was saying. So I made an edit farther down in the next paragraph. "No individual Board member shall be allowed to direct a department head in the methods or manners in which the department's day-to-day business is to be conducted." It says, "Unless through the Town Administrator." I, I changed that to, "Unless authorized by vote of the entire Board." And the vote, okay, let me say it differently. "Is to be conducted unless through and voted to be by the Town Administrator." In other words, I want a way for the Board to know that, that something is going on. I don't want it to be complete, the Board to be completely blindsided by something that might be going on in Town Hall that we never heard of because there was a resolution by the Town Administrator and it was never brought to our attention.
On that same...
Way to say that. Maybe you have a better way, Joe, or a different way or a different...
No, no. I, I, on that 1604, you know, at the very beginning, my concern was, you know, at the last sentence, "The Town Administrator supports the Board." And then it has, "With appointments and policy formulation, inflammation and compliance." I, I don't think we need that. Just eliminate "with" the appointment. It just, "The Town Administrator supports the Board." Flat out. I, I truly don't think we need "with" the appointments and the policies formulate and, and inflammation and compliance. I, I just think that kind of puts all that power right there. And, I mean, I had that whole section, just so you know. That was my biggest concern, that 1604. All the rest are a lot of little lines and this and that. But that right there needs to be worded so that Mr. Kreidler has the power to do what he has to do. But we as a Board have to have more input. And I have no intentions to sit here on my hands for 15 months. It's just not going to work. We need to know. I, I want to know what is going on in this community. And I don't want to hear it from a citizen on the street. I'll tell you that right now.
What about the next paragraph, Joe?
1605?
No, no, no. The next paragraph right after that, the, the one that I just talked about.
Yeah, you just changed all them words and I was listening. I, I agree with that, you know? We need to, we need to fix that. I would have just eliminated it, but I'm just too radical.
All right. So I guess my question is, this section needs changed. What I'd like to do, Wayne, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I, I think you covered it.
All right. So what I would recommend that we do is, since we don't have exact wording, I would like to write this up and for consideration by the Board and run it by Adam, pretty much anything that we, any changes we make here. Is that okay?
Can we take a vote now or just so we don't have to go to every single item? Just, you're kind of being more proactive here and, and taking down some specific notes. I mean, I'll go back and I'll listen to this and I'll edit some of my notes. But can we all agree that we're, yeah, we're talking about things, what you said? I've kind of agreed. I think Wayne said the same thing, he agreed. Just move to the next one. And then when it's all done, just you go, do what you got to do with council and bring it to us and we vote on it.
All right. So do I have a motion? I guess I'm going to take these one section at a time. Do I have a, a motion to, to modify 1605 in the way that we just discussed?
I can offer a suggestion.
Sure.
I know Joe has his, you have yours. Jim, do we have this as a Word document?
I just emailed it to Veronica in Word.
Okay. What I, I would suggest just to, I'm trying to write the whole thing here, is to use track changes, place your, you know, delete what you want to delete and put the, some sort of language together and then consolidate that to Adam.
Okay. How do, how do we do that with the, I, I guess what I need to know, I'm thinking open meeting law. I mean, yeah, in a normal world, I would say...
You know, open, I'm not saying to look at yours, but Adam would, it's the same thing as if we were doing it with Jim. Each of us gives a consolidated, you know, whatever changes we want. And then we reconvene at an open meeting to revisit said changes after Adam reviews it. It's not working, it's not, we're not doing a working document, sharing it back and forth. Unlike anything else that we do with the Town Administrator.
Then, then I just think, this is, I, I don't think, I think we need to go down them, talk about them and either take them out or do like Ronnie has just said, let's change them, vote on them and just move on. I mean, we can, I can send to Jim or I got to send to Ronnie and Ronnie can send to Jim. And then I may have one opinion, she has another one, and you have one, Wayne. Then where are we going with this?
We, you got to vote. If we vote on the, the changes tonight and Adam comes back with other change, you know, you say you can't do that. We're not going to know that until the next meeting. So I, I don't know.
What I want to vote on is just the right to change, to, for me, to make adjustments to that section. Not the, not to vote on the changes themselves. That will happen at a different meeting.
Right. That's what I thought we were voting on, just to allow.
Jim, do we need a vote for that, though?
I think either as you go or in total after you're done. But I think there should be some record of a vote that action's being taken and someone's being authorized to make edits.
Well, that's what I said at the beginning, right? Let's just make, take a vote that whatever we discuss, Ronnie's going to deal with it and just be done with it.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion again. I make a motion that we go down these policies and we discuss what we're going to have for change. Veronica, you were taking notes. We're, we're listening to both sides. If we have something we want to say, so it's change and you're writing it down? Change it, send it to council and let's move on.
All right. So let's go to section 1605. Oh, is there a second? I should say, we have a motion on what? All in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
William Miller, yes.
Veronica Calley, yes. So it's unanimous. All right, 1605. Do you have any changes to that, Joe?
No. I just want to really just highlight one section of it. It says, "The Town Administrator shall also assist and work under the direction of the Selectmen in the formulation, implement, implementation and compliance of policies." So we just have to have saying it. We have to have part in it. You know what I mean?
Where, where do you see that?
That's on 1605 4.2. It's in there, but I just, I'm just highlighting...
First paragraph, last line.
Oh, that doesn't change. In other words...
No, no, I'm just, but I wanted to bring that just so we, we, we know the direction we're trying to go here.
Okay. So that's, all right. I had, I had some changes in that section. It has to do with the inquiring. So if you go down on the page that doesn't have 1605, "To inquire at any time into the conduct and operation of any office or any department, its officers or employees under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen." I want to add, "Only after consultation and a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen."
And where is that, Ronnie? I know it's the next page. What section? You got ahead of me.
It's, it's the same section, 1605.
Yeah, I'm in there.
And on the next page, if you go down, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph, it starts to inquire.
To inquire, yeah, that's what I had. All right, yeah, perfect. I'm good with that. Add that.
That's pretty much what's in the Charter, but with a, a piece after it. So, all right. Any other changes on 1605? I have, I have one more change. It's the second to last paragraph. All right, and this comes more as a question. And so Jim, this might be a question for you. "The Town Administrator must strive to maintain a close working relationship with all members of the Board. He or she shall regularly brief all the Board members on all important issues." So the question becomes, is that, how has this worked in the past? Because it's, it's not specific. Does it mean that you do it individually? Or does it mean that you do it at a weekly meeting? So how has this been, you know, with all the Board members there at the same time? So how has this worked operationally? Because I... Because I will tell you right now that this is one of the, for me, this is one of the hardest things to figure out. Can I ask that or can I not? And sometimes I can and sometimes I can't and I have no clue when.
The easy, the easy answer Veronica is if the communication is coming from me to either one or a majority or all of you, even at the same time, that's okay. That is allowed. Where it becomes a problem is if you communicate back to another member of the board in any fashion. So the way it has worked is like it does now. I send you a group text message or an email that, you know, X, Y, and Z has occurred. Or if it's something that is not urgent, then it's at the every other week selectmen's meeting. I guess I don't understand where you're having difficulty because under the open meeting law, you, you can't ask questions even through a staff member of other members of the board.
No, I, it's more, how do we get information from you? How do I know when you and Joe have taken a walk down to 97 Main Street to check out what's going on there and, and it doesn't get communicated to me? I mean, that isn't anything that has happened, I don't think, has it, Joe?
No.
But you know, how do I know when, or Wayne, or Joe? In other words, how are things communicated? That, to me, that is a really, really, what I have here, the form of briefing is not specified. And so how do we know that? That's what I'm trying to.
It becomes, I think Veronica, it becomes a question of what level of detail, what degree of specificity about the daily goings on of the town administrator, individual members of the board want. You know, and I've experienced all kinds. You know, Wayne is a classic example of somebody that wants to be bothered with the high points in shorthand. You know, tell me what I need to know, tell me succinctly and then, you know, what's required of me. My experience with you so far is that you want to know a greater level of detail and with more frequency. So it seems like a lot of what's being discussed in the edits to the policy center around communication, I'm not talking about Joe's because Joe wanted to shred the whole thing, but.
Like, that's okay, I'm only one vote.
You know, if I don't know what, I mean, I would never know that you would want to know that Wayne and I were sitting in here one day when you popped in and stuck your head in the room and saw us sitting with the superintendent and you seemed legitimately miffed that.
What was?
Right.
And I would be too.
And I'm going to stop you right at the, right there. At the time, I was like liaison to the board, the water superintendent and the water commissioner, so.
So I wouldn't have been miffed if I had walked in, Wayne, to you and Dave having a conversation. That would not have miffed me. It was the fact that it was you and Jim, he was brand new and, and I thought, wow, I thought he would have been introduced to the board as opposed to, and I was the only other Board of Selectmen. So I was surprised that there was a conversation that was going on that I wasn't even privy to. I hadn't even known that it was going to happen. Had I known that it was going to happen, I, I, well, I knew that I couldn't have been there, it would have been a meeting, which would have been logical if the purpose of the meeting was to introduce him to a board member, then I would have liked to have also been offered the opportunity to be introduced to the new water superintendent. Do you see what I'm saying? And that's why I was miffed. It was not the fact that you were talking together, it was the fact that you were talking together and I didn't know that and I hadn't been offered the same opportunity, nor would I have known that I could have asked for the same opportunity.
You know, and I, I just want to intervene here for a second. And I understand where you come from, Ronnie, and I support that thought. Myself, I've spoke with Jim and he's given me the guidance that, you know, I am a liaison for certain boards. I think it would be absolutely inappropriate for me, and correct me at any time, anybody, to take and bring, you know, the highway superintendent or the tax assessors office or the town clerk up into Jim's office and sit down and have a conversation. If I'm a liaison, I can go to their office, I can go somewhere. I don't think, I, I, I understand and I respect where you come from, Ronnie. I don't think, the perception there is not good and that's one of the biggest things I'm trying to fix in town. We need the perception to be better, the communications to be better, open and transparent.
So, so that's the, you know, that's the, that's what I'm trying to fix and I don't, and I'm looking for the words that would, would prevent me from being miffed or Wayne from being miffed or whatever. That's what I'm looking for and it's an operating policy. It more, and it also goes to communication. I have something farther on that addresses that, but I, I just think that you shall regularly brief all the board members on all important issues. Jim, if you had, so in other words, if you had sent out an email, and I'm, I'm not trying to be critical here, throw people under the bus, you had sent out an email to me and Wayne and said, hey, would you like to stop by to visit the water super, you know, to get to know the new water superintendent? I wouldn't have been at all concerned about that, miffed, as you put it. I wouldn't have been. But I had assumed that he would be introduced to the board at a board meeting.
I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair assessment of what you saw, but you know, the, the other side of the issue is that he was just starting, the board had not yet had its first meeting since he started. He was in talking to me, Wayne came in to sign the warrant. I introduced Wayne, I said, hey, you know, this is Dave, he's the new water superintendent. Wayne came, stuck his head into it, on the liaison, you know, introduced himself, sat down and we started chatting. So it was, it was nothing scheduled that, that in and of itself would have looked like something that was formal, that you were by design or intent excluded from. It was really an organic meeting and you came in, I believe, to sign the warrant as well.
Yeah, I do think that. I, I came for whatever, make copies, I was making copies of the housing trust stuff to get it out to T E O for the drivers that day. Anyway, all right. That sentence, I want, I want to, something more specific there. He shall regularly brief all the board members on all important issues. How does that occur? So I am going to put something in there. I'm not sure what, and then you guys can either agree or disagree. But moving on, role of support staff. So 16, before I go on, 1605, anything else to change there? I have a few things in there and Joe, I think you wanted.
Yeah, I did. Yeah.
Okay, so 1605 is on my list then. All right. Going on to 1606, role of the support staff of the Office of the Board of Selectmen. I had a change to this, Joe, did you have anything before I read mine?
Which one?
1606.
Yeah, I just think where it says the role of the supportive staff office of the Board of Selectmen, where it says, I'll read that sentence, the support staff functions as a support for the town administrator. Support staff must strive to maintain a close working relationship with all members of the board and the town administrator. Support staff reports to and takes direction from the town administrator and should be also the selectmen, not to run day to day, but we gotta have some say there, right? Am I wrong in that?
Well, this goes also to operating procedures, to operate, not the operating procedures, but to the organizational chart. I, I would, I would change this to, I would like to have support staff. I, I would like to be able to, okay, example. I, I guess I would like to be able to make sure, I would like to be able to have administrative staff support for the selectmen ourselves. And we don't have that right now, but we do, but we don't. So I guess direct access. So I would put the support staff functions as a support for the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. Support staff must strive to maintain a close working relationship with all members of the board and the town administrator. Support staff reports to the Board of Selection, Selectmen and takes direction from the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. I, I would do something like that in 1606.
Yeah.
And that goes with the organizational chart too.
I'm good with that.
Wayne?
Yep, fine.
And we gotta get this approved by council anyway, correct?
Yeah, this all gets run through because it has to fit with the charter. I mean, it does have to fit with the charter, whatever.
It has to match the charter. I get that and we should.
1607, do you have anything there, Joe?
No, believe it or not, they gave them all good checks on that one.
Yeah, I think, all right, I, I don't have anything to change in 1607. Do you, Wayne?
One thing, we definitely just gotta make sure, Ronnie, that us, all of us as a board, it is defined that they can't have two bosses. That, that just won't work. You know what I mean? So, you know, we still have to make sure that Mr. Kreidler is doing the day to day. I get that, but we have to put them words in, but we have to make sure it's stated that we can't expect any town employee, I don't care if it's the highway, the water, anyone that feels they have to have two bosses. So Joe Shank, Potzegor is having a bad hair day today. So Jim told him to go move that pile. Joe says, I don't want that pile moved, I want, I want to rip the leaves. Do you know what I'm saying? We have to be very careful that we don't, we, we get the power we need, but we don't overstep our bounds.
Okay. So what do you want me to do with six? I think that what I just did with 1606 was create a two bosses situation. If that's what you mean, Joe. What I, what I said, I don't know what you said did, but I think what I said did.
What I would suggest is going back to the org chart, that there's a dotted line reporting structure. That's what we use in my world, that you're not actually the boss, but you have some oversight to that. That's the simplest and cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
All right. So I'm, I'm going to write dotted line right here.
Yeah, and I think that gives, that still gives the direction that we need to move forward and, you know, move on with that. I'm good with that.
We'll be looking at this again. Go to 1608 then.
Yeah.
Town administrator rules and ethics.
The biggest thing, we have to make sure that the town administrators on the very first line realize that his or her basic function is to carry out the policies of the board. Okay? It's our wishes. Until we are voted out of office, we have to do the right thing for the community, we have to do the right thing for the people and as long as we're all on that same page. I have no intentions of running a day to day operations. Mr. Kreidler is going to handle that. I have to run my own corporation. I don't need two of them to run, but I want to be involved so we make the right decisions for our community, our employees and our citizens. That's all I have to say.
Wayne, do you have anything? Okay, well, I do on, under two and three. I'm going to just, I have to read here, sorry. It's number two.
That's all right.
Town administrator in his or her relations with other administrative officers, boards and committees of the town should, and, and my note here is what does this even mean? Endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that will support the mission statement and practices of good leadership as established by the Board of Selectmen for the benefit of the people of the community. So I have never seen a mission statement. Is there a mission statement somewhere? And do we have a practices of good leadership policy somewhere? Because I, I read this and said, what does this even mean? That's what I wrote to myself because I wasn't, I mean, maybe you haven't figured out, but I like things clearly defined and I am not seeing this clearly defined, which makes it wishy washy, which means that it winds up being delivered differently to different people.
Uh huh.
I'm not sure what to do with it.
Eliminate it. If we don't, Jim, do we have a mission statement and practice a good leadership policy?
Um.
It's a simple question, yes or no?
No, I don't believe there's any such thing as a leadership policy, but there is a mission statement, I'm just trying to, to pull it up.
Where would we find that? In other words, is it public, is it available publicly on the website?
I want, I want to say that it was actually a part of the, the budget book that was rolled out as a result of the Collins Plan, not the, the Waging Class Plan, but each department's description had a mission statement. It'll be easier for me to actually go pull a hard copy quickly, excuse me.
So endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that will support the mission statement and practices of good leadership as established by the Board of Selectmen for the benefit of the people of the community.
But it tells me that the town administrator is establishing these.
Right. And I think he just said that each department has established them. If that's the case.
There is one for Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator. It reads, it is the mission of the Townsend Board of Selectmen to provide a wide range of high quality services so the citizens of Townsend, while at the same time support a strong economic base for the town. It's the goal of the Board of Selectmen to provide services as economically as possible so that living or doing business in the community remains affordable while preserving something close to the current balance of reliance on residential and commercial property.
So what does that have to do with the town administrator's relations with other administrative officers, boards and committees of the town?
And suggest it had anything to do with it? You just asked me if there was a mission statement.
Well, I think I would, Joe, we strike this.
Yeah, we'll strike that, there's no reason to be there.
Okay, so that's a change in 1608. And then I also doubt, the very last paragraph, and I have, consistent with the law, I think that means open meeting law, the town administrator should make available all correspondence, mail, emails or other related materials submitted to the office. And that, that comes down into policies and procedures, which maybe you're going to see more on that later, but not today. I would like to see outlook and Office 365 used so that every two weeks, any. so that every two weeks, anything that comes into the office is scanned and put in a shared folder that we can all see. So that if someone calls me up and says, why haven't you signed the X, Y, Z? I do not have to respond with, I have no idea what X, Y, Z you're talking about because it came in between the time that one agenda was written and another agenda was written. So I, I think that I would want to see, you know, there's, it's a procedural thing, but it, um, I would like to see it, in, in here it says, and I don't wanna change this. The Town Administration should make available all correspondence, mail, emails or other related materials submitted to the office. I would like to, uh, have a policy or procedure put in place so that we are using the wonderful IT that we now have just so that I don't have to go in and yell at Jim and say, how come I didn't know this? When in fact, the procedure now is to just stick it in a folder and not look at it. And so, um, because it's not a meeting yet. I, I should be able to see in between meetings what's coming up. And each of us should be able to do that.
Absolutely. Anything that comes in there, we should, and I, I don't think there's a problem. Jim, you're doing a great job as far as emails, you respond, you know. I just think it comes in, scan it in, send it to us. If we look at that and we don't feel it's important, whatever, we can delete it ourselves or we can put it in a special folder, but let's, let's get, so that we see everything that comes in. Might get overwhelming. We may call you up in two months, three months, hey, Jim Stufson and all that crazy, but until we can get some policy so that I will feel better because I really, I, I mean, I think, Jim, you've, you've mentioned it, you said it. I'm truly trying to put my best foot forward to learn this process. And if I don't have everything in front of me so I can study it, review it and ask questions, I'll never get anywhere.
See, I, I, I will tell you that for me, I would rather, Jim, so that, I would rather, Jim, scan it and put it in a shared folder. Carolyn set us up with all those SharePoint folders.
I just see that. I'm not sure how to use it yet, but I'm learning.
If, if, you know, those we, so that it's not on Jim to have to email it to all of us and invariably forget one of us or forget to email. It comes in automatically, just put it in that folder and then it's on us to look at that folder. And then we don't have our emails all junked up. I shouldn't say junked up, but all filled up with all these emails that we may not see as relevant right at the moment. But you can at, at a time that's convenient to each of us, look in that folder and say, this is what has come in this week. Or maybe you don't wanna see it till the day before the meeting. You know, Jim already, already said that I wanna see more than what Wayne wants to see. So that would give me the ability to look at everything that I wanna see and Wayne to say, hey.
I want, I'm just saying, I'm just saying where you are. I want, you know, Wayne, Wayne's gonna, you know, has a very tough job. He's got big responsibilities, so, you know. I guess you only can stretch yourself so thin at any given time, but I am the type, I've said it, I'll say it again. I wanna see it. I wanna review it. I wanna know what's going on. So put that in there. I'm good with that.
Okay, well, it's already here. It's more, do we need a policy for that, Jim? Or, do you know what I mean? Or is it, every board that you deal with is probably gonna wanna do things a little differently. But, but this is already policy. I don't know.
I can tell you, Veronica, that I, I've actually functioned under this exact policy for 25 years because this isn't something that, that Townsend wrote. This is something, if you Google Selectmen's Operating Policies in Massachusetts, probably close to half of the community is using this document. So, um, you'd be surprised that it doesn't generally change when a new board comes in. But if there's something that this board that has the absolute right to change policy, wants to change, amen.
I don't wanna change the words. I just wanna know how it's done, you know, which then to me is a policy.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jim, you just said it, so now I guess, perfect for me, open my door. So where did these policies come from? Obviously, they got implemented when you got, got here. Are these the policies that you gave to the Board of Selectmen and said, hey, I think this is what we need to use? Or were we already using this?
Uh, I did not present these, but when they were presented to me, I actually could probably go back to the email when they were sent to me. And I offered my comments on them. Actually, one of the comments, I think, still exists in the, one of the very last sections, there's an O M L with a question mark, which probably seems really random. That was one of my original comments back in 17 when this was being proposed. But no, I, I didn't bring these, but I'm familiar with them. I had no problem with them because I'm used to them.
And that's okay, you know, because I've reviewed the Pepperell ones, Board of Selectmen Policies and Procedures I've got, I've, I've pulled up a couple others and I always just seem really over the edge with Town Administrator, Town Administrator, Town Administrator, you know. And that's, that's the policy that was, was written, that is what was approved by Carolyn Smart, Gordy Clark and Cindy King. I get that. But do we really need that much all the time? You know, we don't need that in our face all the time, as far as I'm concerned.
You, you guys pick the music and I'll dance.
All right.
You like country or you like rock and roll?
I can't dance, actually.
All right, so, um, there, there's some to change in 1608. 1609, I'm good with that.
Yep.
Everybody else?
1610, I'm good with that.
I was good with that too. 1611, um, 1612, 1613, 1614, 1615. 16.
I'm good right up to the executive session.
All right, so that means 1616. Okay, all right, 1617, what do you have with executive session?
Well, just before I get out of that, I just, you know, so we're all on the same page here. That the one thing that the townspeople need to know is the Board of Selectmen run the town. We have hired Mr. Kreidler. He's the administrator. But ultimately, the citizens have empowered the three of us. And we have to, I'm gonna say it again, the board runs the town. We have the help of Mr. Kreidler. So let's go to executive session. I'll let you go first.
I have nothing. What do you have, Joe? I, I.
I gotta reread where my notes were. I guess the thing I, I, I would say is we gotta be very, very clear and more specific. I think, Jim, you've said it to me, there's only, I think, five, correct me wrong, or seven things that you can go in, seven into executive session for. We just gotta make sure we're very, very clear about that so we don't skirt any law. When we go in there, we're going in for the right reason. That's all I, I wanted to make a point.
Wayne, anything?
No.
Okay. I, I think, Joe, just on that, the open meeting law, i- if you read the Open Meeting Law Manual, I think that is where you can see all those reasons for, and all the regs for that. Agenda procedures, I have a couple things here. Want me to go or? I would just like to do the agenda sooner, um, is all, so that we can get the packet sooner so that we have more time to review it. And so I would change the, the agenda to the close of business on the Tuesday before. That doesn't mean that the agenda's closed, but that we start with that. And I would wanna say that when we get agenda items together, we include in the agenda requests, and I, I am just as guilty as this as anybody else, all the things that we want in the packet. Because I would like to have the packet on Thursday afternoon as opposed to Friday afternoon. We usually get a Friday afternoon because that's posting time. But I would like to have it a day earlier than that. I don't know whose dog is barking, but anyway, um, that's all.
And I know, I, I know in there that, you know, I guess I could request something on the agenda, but it's ultimately up to the chair. And if you decide, gee, you don't like what I have on the agenda, it don't get there. I really feel, I don't, I don't care which board member, if I want something on the agenda, I think it should be allowed if Wayne wants it. I, I don't think we have to say, we gotta get that approved by the board, by the chair.
Do we specify that in here?
And it says right there, each of the board members in the town may place items on the agenda. The chair, in consolation with the town mayor, shall schedule a realistic time period, interview, conference, all right, plan the meeting agenda is that of the chair. Right? The responsibility coordinated planning of the meeting. I'm just trying to make sure we specify that any board member should be allowed to put something. That needs to be specified.
So how can we say that better? It says, each of the board members and the Town Administrator may place items on the agenda, shall schedule a realistic time period for each appointment, interview, conference or other scheduled.
Well, well, and I agree with you, but in the month I've been here, well, send it, but it has to go. Well, and I, I, I guess.
Let me chime in, Joe. In my experience over the last three years, there's been nothing that's not been allowed. You know, it's, it is the discretion of the chair if they don't wanna talk about it, but it's not my experience. I think the, the language in there is just fine. It specifies you may place items on the agenda. Doesn't have to be any more complicated than that.
All right, okay. So, um, yeah. So what about in the next paragraph? Can we make it a day earlier? This policy says Wednesday before the Tuesday board meeting. I, or do we?
I think we need it sooner. I, I would like to see it. I'd like to have a little more time so I don't have to cram five hours and study and then do a five-hour meeting. You know, let's, is that reasonable or even doable, Jim?
The only thing that happens, the, the further you pull back the closing of the agenda, say you close the agenda on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, invariably, things are gonna come up on that Thursday or Friday or Monday. And the open meeting law doesn't allow you to add things to the agenda unless they are an emergency or, uh, specifically weren't known to the chair prior to the setting of the agenda. So the, the further you pull it back to close, you just leave yourself a little bit naked in those, those days in between. That's all.
Okay, so I think what I would say then is, um, because I, I don't expect it to close the agenda. I don't, I don't think the agenda is really closed until posting on Friday. What I'm trying to do is come up with a way to make it so that the packets can be put together sooner rather than later. You know, to have all the things together to, you know, I'd like to put the packets together on Thursday. And then if there's an addendum to the packet that comes in on Friday, that would be fine. But, uh, you know, to have it, um, so I guess it's that last sentence in that, um, paragraph. Items of emergency or strictly routine, um, nature that develop after, um, posting as opposed to closing of the agenda. I would change that to after posting of the agenda. Maybe considering under chairman's additions to the agenda, because that's really the way it is. The agenda wouldn't close on Tuesday. It would just mean that we would get things in to say, this is what we have. And something might develop. You might get a letter, Jim, like the one we got at the end of last week, that needs to be put in, you know? And so you, you could still add it as long as it wasn't already posted. But the packet, I want the packet on Thursdays. If something comes in on Friday, it's an addition to the packet. And we know to look for five, it'll go in at like 4.11. 4.11 comes in later, you know?
I was like, yeah.
We get the packets on Thursdays. So I would change an effort to have such material, um, available. It says at least four days before any regularly scheduled meeting. I would put, um, the Thursday afternoon before a Tuesday meeting. Or at least four business days, maybe it's three business days, before any regularly scheduled meeting. So if I wanted it Thursday afternoon, instead of making it four days, make it three business days.
You do run into Monday holidays there, Veronica, when we use business day terms. You get a Monday holiday and that's gonna pull it back even further another day. So I think if you, if you just key it to the day, if you want it by Wednesday or by Thursday before a Tuesday meeting, just say it.
Well, if there's a Monday holiday, I would want it Wednesday. You know, do you see what I'm saying? Because we would have to post the agenda on Thursday instead of Friday. So a holiday would back that up.
Well, we're just asking for the packet to be as much as Jim could put together in the packet by Thursday. See what I'm saying? So I think if we put that in there, that gives us that extra day. That gives me study time, gives you study time. Wayne's gonna be sick, kicking back vacation and saying, oh, boy, thank God.
But do you want me to make it Thursday afternoon?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because we're not closing the agenda. Jim still has it till Friday. So if anything happens on Friday morning, he gets a letter like you just said, or something comes in, he's not emailing us a, a hundred or 250-page packet that I printed out two weeks ago. See, a week ago, see what I'm saying? Well, we're gonna print out six pages or so. Much better, much better.
Much better. So I'm gonna make it an effort to have such material available the Thursday afternoon before a Tuesday meeting.
Yeah.
And then people can make whatever adjustments. And then the, um, the, the, I have one more. Copies of the minutes of the pre- previous meeting and a listing of all important correspondence, reports and other pertinent background materials shall be forwarded with the agenda to board members.
Where were you on that one, Ronnie?
It's the second to the last paragraph that begins copies of the minutes.
All right, yeah.
And then here's where I put that, this in. Correspondence shall be available to all selectmen in a shared folder as it is received by the TA and administrative assistant. That's what I wrote in there to kinda take up what I talked about previously.
Yeah.
This, that last sentence then, Veronica, would have you having it both in the shared drive and then printed and made a part of the agenda bi-weekly as well?
That's what this says, and I know, and again, I'm going by Planning Board. We often got that. Not so much anymore after shared drives got started to be used. So it might not be.
It seems redundant.
Yeah, so, so let's take out the listing and just make it correspondence shall be available to all selectmen in a shared folder as it is received by the TA and the admin assistant. I would almost start a new shared folder the day after a meeting, you know, with the date on it of the next meeting, you know. So this is for 216, you know, that gets started after the 22 meeting. Do you see what I mean?
So perhaps even then, uh, a 2021 shared folder inside of which are gonna be 26. So perhaps even then, a 2021 shared folder inside of which are going to be 26, 26 two week folders.
Two week chunk with the date of the meeting that they are the the correspondence is intended to be ready for.
Got you.
So. Sounds a little crazy, but I think it'll work. And I and I think it'll be easier than a bunch of emails. Although we'll still have emails, but still. Okay, so we're doing 1618. I'm going to add stuff there, the agenda procedures. Anybody else have anything else before we move on to minutes?
Nope.
All right. Minutes, anything in minutes?
No, I was good.
I was good too, Wayne. 1620. I just want to change statute to statute in that like first sentence. That's a typo or maybe it's the third sentence. I don't know. It's the first paragraph, the top sentence of the whatever page. There's no page numbers on this. So unless specifically allowed by statute, I think they mean statute, correct?
Yep.
And then. I would remove the last sentence there. It is the practice of the board to accept the recommendation of the sitting committee members for appointment of new members.
So what that's saying is whatever committee brings somebody forward, we just have to approve it. Is that what I'm getting out of that?
I think that's what this says here. You don't have to. It's just a practice. It doesn't mean that you have to.
I think it's ultimately the board's decision who gets appointed.
I think that committees can bring people forward.
Right.
But I think it's ultimately the board's decision, which is why I would remove that.
I would agree.
Wayne?
Do you guys? Yep.
Okay.
All right, 1620 then gets those two changes. 1621 Advisory Committees of the Board of Selectmen.
I don't have enough.
All right. Advisor, I don't, Wayne? All right, the next one, relations with town boards, committees, and commissions. Oh, I guess I did have under advisory. Do we have a committee handbook?
There is one, yeah.
Okay.
I'll send it to you.
And and when was it last reviewed? I guess is the other question. But that's, yeah, send that to me. I wasn't going to make any changes to that. That was just a question.
It says it should be reviewed every two years, right? When was the last time, Jim?
Looks like 16 was the last time it was reviewed.
Okay, so so that's another thing for our documents in in the goals section. We can add that to the list. 1622 Relations with Town Boards, Committees, and Commissions. And I guess under C, therefore, as the executive board that is historically responsible for the overall leadership and coordination of town affairs, the selectman will require that the town administrator, I would put a colon there and take out the two with a colon. It says at least two times each year, schedule meetings with boards, committees, and commissions to carry out the functions listed above, which is set townwide goals and priorities, identify and anticipate major problems. This is that room down in room two with the big boards. What is everybody doing? In my head, that's what this is. But when has this happened? I think it's a good thing, but I don't know when it has ever happened.
Wayne, if you recall, probably your first year, I think we had group meetings of boards and commissions scheduled two or three different times and never were able to coordinate everybody being able to come. So I think the last time one actually happened, Veronica, was on the org chart when the org chart was being rolled out in 17.
Okay. So anyway, that that was just interesting to me. Other than that one typo change, I didn't want to make anything, but I think it would be great. All right, anything else in that section? Otherwise, we'll move on. To 1623 Relations with Citizens. I have an addition to the last paragraph in that section.
I don't know if it's appropriate at this point here, but I would, I don't know if we have to have it in here or not, but one thing that I am going to work very hard on to see that is brought back. First, we get back into as soon as we can to COVID. I get all that back into that building. And I think we need to get back to the public input. When we're having a discussion, whatever be the case, let's make something up. Let's just use 97 Main Street, okay? Well, you got neighbors next door that really concerned. So if that's there, we're discussing it. That's the time that we should hear from them. I get the public comment section. We just have to find a way to control that, corral it in so it's done in a proper manner. But we got to get back that we listen to the public in those meetings. That is, I, in my 49 years in town, I've made a lot of selectman's meetings and there's no better feeling to walk out of the town hall after a selectman's meeting and you had a concern and you expressed yourself to the board and they listened at the time. You may not get the answer you want, but you listened and you go away. The way it has been for years is we're not going to take any comment. We don't want to talk about it. I think, first of all, I would never entertain that as a board of selectmen. It was disrespectful to the citizens of our community. So I don't know if that has to be put in there so that we know. People have concerns, we need to make sure we hear them.
And Joe, I think that in here it allows for that. It says persons who will be directly affected by the post board discussion on their action will be notified by the town administrator and of the date and time of meeting at which the matter will be discussed or acted upon by the board. I don't know if that has happened other than, yeah, 97 Main is.
I'll tell you firsthand, okay? We're just, and it's realistic. I mean, Wayne wasn't involved in this, I don't think, but a prior board. My business was involved, brought in front of the board for a towing pot, okay? But yet they're going to discuss it. But when I wanted to ask a question, they were directly talking about me. There's no comment, Mr. Shank. That kind of stuff can't happen. And I hope to God this board, we move forward. Don't ever do that to citizens again because it's unacceptable and unprofessional.
So I think that the next paragraph addresses that, Joe. That it is okay to, in considering matters of citizen concern at a regular meeting, the public will be allowed to ask questions or make statements relative to the matter under consideration of the discretion of the chairman or upon request of any member of the board.
And it does say that, and I agree with you. But I guess my point of making, that has not been a common practice for the past three or four years, and that is not the right thing to do. So I just want to make sure that's highlighted, that it stays in there, that the citizens have the right to speak. That was only my point of making.
Thanks, Joe. Yep. And I think that, well, anyway. It's in here, so it is allowed. So the next one, I guess it depends on who the chairman is, though. But it says or upon request of any member of the board. So if you were to notice that someone was ready to ask a question, then you could say, yeah, that's the way I read it anyway. So the next paragraph, all citizen questions and complaints are to be answered promptly. Questions and concerns relating solely to the office of selectmen will be answered promptly by the town administrator. And I have added, and the town administrator shall notify the board of the concern and response. That's what I've got in there. That needing prompt attention by the board should be referred to the chairman for consideration and possible inclusion on the next meeting agenda.
Good.
That's, that's. All right.
Boy, these documents may not make the shredder. We're almost done.
We are almost done. All right, so I'm going to make that change if that's okay with you guys.
Good.
Okay, to 1623. 1624 Employee Grievances. Joe or Wayne, did you guys have anything there before I was saying?
No, these are pretty much taken under the union.
See, I would remove the last part of the sentence after the semicolon. The employees shall be shown the administrative process to be followed. A meeting with the board may be requested by any employee. I would put a period there. It says the board shall defer such meeting until other remedies available to the employee under the personnel policies and/or collective bargaining agreements have been exhausted. So I guess that comes to this question. So the personnel policies, I haven't quite figured out yet in my however many months as a selectman, who those personnel policies apply to? Because it applies to some people, but not to others, and it depends on the type of contract they have, is what I am beginning to glean from all of this. So so that is, what I have there is change this. And so maybe what needs to be looked at are the personnel policies. But for now, I would just put a period right there.
That's a different, that's a different animal in itself. I don't think we should try to tackle that.
Not today, certainly not today. But I guess what I need to know, and Jim, it would be good probably for Joe, Wayne, you may already know this, I don't know, exactly who to do those personnel policies and procedures apply to.
I would like to know that. The simple answer, and I think when you submit these policies to Adam, maybe a note on this one for him to give a response to that question because he's well outside of it. But the simple answer is they're entitled noncontractual personnel policies and procedures. So if you're in a union or if you have a personal services contract, in the introduction of the policies, it says they don't apply to you unless.
Right.
Unless there's, well, I'll say it in the inverse. They will apply to you unless your contract document says something on that exact point. So if it says, for instance, you get 10 sick days in the policies and procedures, but your contract says you get 15 sick days, your contract will govern.
So that that puts an inequity then amongst the people who work in town hall. Some of them get 15 days, some of them get 10 days vacation.
I made those numbers up. That's not real.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. That's just your example. All right.
And and right now, Veronica, Joe, Wayne, we have, I think, just two positions that aren't either in a union or under a personal services contract. That's it. So these personnel policies in total are only covering two positions. And then parts that aren't referenced in contract or in personal services contract, like the exit interview we just discussed last week. So if there's no reference to an exit interview in a personal services contract, then the personnel policy will kick in. So there are bits and pieces that will cover everybody, but in total, it's only two people, two positions.
So, okay, I find that confusing. It's, it might have been at one point when there was not a, you know, when so many employees were not in the union, it might have made sense. I think that that has to be reviewed somehow.
I agree.
And that might be something for future Collins Center work. All right.
On that, good checkup.
So I'm going to change 1624 somewhat, and we'll look at that. There will be some change there.
Yep.
You know, so, all right, inspection of public records. I had nothing there.
I'm good.
Departmental meetings and reporting. Oh, that's where the OML question is, Jim. The OML question thing. And I'm just going to take that out.
Right. Where is that?
It's in the second to the last.
Second to the last paragraph.
Yeah.
In the middle.
The OML?
Yeah, just get rid of that.
That was just a note of mine from five years ago.
That didn't.
Oh, so you're involved in this.
I told you that, Joe. I said I got an email and I'll show you it when they were giving me it. I made my comment.
I'm good.
Okay, I have one thing. Particular attention should be paid to how the department heads' actions during the prior month fit in with the department's annual goals and objectives. And then I had a question, when are these set? And that goes back to an earlier one, Jim, where you're the one, you know, the, you know, room two thing, set townwide goals and priorities, relations with town boards, committees, and commissions. So I just put a question there, when are these set, the department's annual goals and objectives? Is that even a thing?
In the in the Collins Center budget process, again, the, where I read that lovely mission statement from, each department lists their goals and objectives for the upcoming year. So that's, this was the year before COVID, when we didn't do this process, so we're in that now.
Okay.
So the budget book that would be prepared for this year coming, people have submitted goals and objectives for the coming year.
Okay, all right. So that was, I didn't want to change that. I just had a question there. All right, so that's it. We made it through without shredding it, Joe.
Well, I'd still go for shredding and start new, but that's okay. I'll accept the changes.
All right, so Jim sent me the doc. I'll put in the changes that were made.
Yep.
And I should probably use track changes for that, correct?
Yeah.
And ship it to Adam.
All right, moving on.
And and when do these, when do Wayne and Joe get to see them again? You know, like, are they?
Once Adam, yeah, once Adam has responded back, just get him on the next agenda.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, anything else on this before we move on to the next thing?
Oh, God, no.
2.3, the towns and organizational charts. And I'm the one that put this on the agenda because I wanted that dotted line.
So we don't have a, we don't have that in front of us to review, correct?
Well, Jim sent it to you in email. I did a print and made it so that I could see it. So I have a whole big thing of it. So looking at this. The one, the dotted line I wanted, actually, I had a solid line, board of selectmen down to executive assistant. And I had a dotted line where there is now a solid under town administrator. I had a dotted line. We might want it dotted in both places, but then we might get into.
What are we trying to get a? What are we trying to get accomplished? What do, so the?
There's got to be one solid boss. Otherwise, you're going to really have the opportunity for chicanery.
Right.
All right, so that's simple. Put the executive secretary under the Board of Selectmen and move on.
And a dotted line over to the.
Town Administrator, sure.
That way, when there are things like the posting for the OSRPD, whatever, the Open Space Recreation Plan, I would like to be able to say, make sure these go to, you know, opposed to that being your responsibility, Jim. That's how I.
And in the past, in the past several months, I've been sitting there reviewing and following, not pointing anything at anybody. It's come from downstairs, upstairs, side offices, all offices. Too many mistakes on the agenda. Too many things not posted right. Too many things incorrect. This way, if she's under the Board of Selectmen, you're the chair, whatever. This is what we want.
Let's not, let's not have that conversation, Joe.
Which one?
Well, when you're, when you're referencing a person who is an employee and job performance.
Oh, I didn't say, I didn't say anybody. I did not, anybody.
We're talking about the executive, we're talking about the executive assistant position, and you said, when she. It doesn't take rocket science to figure out what's going on.
My words were, when she does these now, we'll have the control of it. I didn't say she did it. When she does it, then she will be responsible. There'll be no blame game. See what I'm saying? So I'm not, I'm not talking about a person. If we're talking to move her to us, it's she would be responsible. I referenced the mistakes. Did I or did I not, Mr. Kreidler?
You, you did, in the same sentence as the word she. So perhaps I heard it wrong, Joe.
I did not mean her doing the mistakes, if you heard it correctly, Jim. I said the mistakes that have been made upstairs, downstairs. I, I went all around the building. Did I or did I not?
Well, you did, and that's why, and that's why I said I may have heard it wrong.
Well, let me finish. Then I said, we're talking about moving her to the Board of Selectmen. And then I said, then she would be responsible. Then you started, well, let's not go down that road about her. So there was no direct phrase that she did anything wrong. And if you took it that way, I apologize for that. I meant if she's in charge.
What I said, Joe, is I, I could have heard you wrong, so I appreciate the clarity on that. My, my job sometimes is to, is to say uncomfortable things to members of the board.
And that's okay?
So that's just where we are.
And that's why I came back with my correction to it. So move on.
Thank you.
All right, so do we need a vote on that? I think we do need a motion to change the organizational chart. So is there a motion?
I make a motion, we change the organization chart as you just described.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shanke, aye.
We're in, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, the next one is that, before we get, no, let's do the Warren articles. I wanted to talk about goods and services, but that might not be something that has to be done. Jim, maybe you and I can just talk about that. Because it has more to do, I, I added that at the beginning to after the ATM articles. But I wanted, I just want to make sure that when we apply for shared streets and spaces, that we have the right names on the grant application under, because we are going to be purchasing, assuming we are awarded the grant, signage at least. And so, and paint for crosswalks and things like that.
Gotcha.
So, anyway, will that work? Or we can do it at the, on the second, but that looks like it's going to be a pretty long meeting.
I think we can work on it, you and I.
Okay, all right. So are you guys good with skipping over goods and services contract for now?
Absolutely.
It's not to make any changes to the policy, it's just to.
To discuss it.
For discussion.
You and Jim can figure that out.
Correct. All right. So Warren articles, and Jim, are you prepared to screen share that with?
To screen, screen share? No. There aren't that many, so I can just read them to you. They, they are nine in number.
This is the annual town meeting? There are only nine articles?
Submitted articles. We have the usual and customary that are eight. So to hear reports, to fill appointed positions, the revolving funds, the operating budget, to fix the salary of elected officials, the water budget, the capital plan, and the assessors inspections article. So those are the usual and customaries. And then we had the following nine submitted articles. One is former Chief Bailey's last installment. Then we had a request for $15,000 for columbarium for the cemetery and parks. Then we had a request from the town clerk to increase the dog licensing fees. Then we have one submitted by the THA, Townsend Housing Authority State Representative, Chaz Sexton Duranian, which is to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds originally appropriated for a feasibility study on the creation of affordable housing on Dudley Road. Next, we have one that is to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 43D of the Mass General Laws. And again, I'm not certain that this one is still alive, but it was in the folder. I know this was pulled back off of your agenda at the last selectmen's meeting, but it is still in here as a placeholder. Then you have North Middlesex Regional School District looking to get a vote from each of the three towns, authorizing them to establish a stabilization fund. So they're only allowed to keep up to 5% of their prior year's operating budget as excess and deficiency, or their version of free cash. They're looking to create a stabilization fund, so if there are extra dollars above that 5% E and D, that they would put it in stabilization.
That should give it back to the towns.
That's how it happens currently. Then we have the planning board just last evening voted to submit an age-restricted development, zoning bylaw. And then we have a placeholder for South Row Road parcel, if we're able to clarify with the owners of that parcel. Then we have, let me see this one. We have one for Townsend Fire Department ambulance. I'm not certain this is actually something that is, is going to live. I'll need to speak with the chief what his intention was on this, but it's in, it's in the file as of now, as a placeholder. And those are the submitted articles by boards, commissions, or departments. And then we have one petition article that was submitted. And it reads, to see if the town will vote to approve the following article. Due to the unusually high turnover in the Townsend Treasurer, Collectors, and Accounting Offices, we respectfully request a forensic audit, starting with fiscal year 2016 to the present day. The funds to pay for the forensic audit will come from the town blank fund or take any action in relation thereto. And that, as of right now, is everything we've got. Now, obviously, it doesn't close, the warrant doesn't close for the annual until March 1st. So we still have a week.
Can I put?
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Who's speaking?
This would be John Page.
Sure, go ahead.
Chairman of the Charter Review Committee. Jim, I, I thought we had put a placeholder in on the chance that we may be able to put forth to a vote the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee. Can we still get that put in?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. My understanding, John, was that that was a placeholder from the last meeting, but, and it didn't go forward, but absolutely, the warrant is still open until, for the annual, until next Monday.
Okay.
I think I'll make a note of that.
Just listening to that, I, I didn't hear that we were included as a placeholder. So I just want to make sure that we are.
You weren't, but you are now.
Thank you, sir.
You got it.
I, I expected to see articles from TCAM.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Steve.
Yep, we will have those articles ready for the, before the March 1st deadline. I have our attorney reviewing two articles now. I had to reach out back with her today to discuss the situation, just brought to my attention today. I want her input into it, but I do expect those two articles to be ready for, for the deadline.
Okay, so can we put two placeholders in for that? Jim?
Yep, making a note right now.
Do we need to vote on that, or can we just put it in?
You have the ability as an individual member to, to put something, and if you're sponsoring it, then you're, you're in.
Okay, so two TCAM articles. I, I had two others, I guess, or one at least, for the pavement, funding of the pavement management plan. I know that's part of the budget process, but I want, I don't know the, like, can the selectmen decide on March 2nd that we're going to put other articles in? Or can we, or it, once it's closed, it's closed, correct?
The bylaw says, once it's closed, it's closed.
Okay.
But there, but there's a legal opinion that says it's the selectmen's warrant under the statute. So in the past, selectmen have added more warrant articles after the first.
Okay, so I think that right now, I'm going to say, let's put in an article placeholder for pavement management plan. We can take them out, correct? We just.
Yeah. Yeah.
So for pavement management plan, I know we're working on the budget, but I would like to see that funded. This is the one for maintenance of the roads, not the override thing. But the funds from excise tax and free cash, if it's available. And I don't know if that needs to be two articles or one. How was it done in the past? I think we can do it with one article.
I think the time we did, it was one article, doing both sources.
All right. And then the other one is the possibility of bringing back an article that we saw at special town meeting regarding a, I just want a placeholder for it, an optional 3% marijuana tax. Which I guess wouldn't be optional, if we put it in. It, it's the, the optional tax that the community can charge. So a placeholder for that.
Wouldn't we need to have a marijuana facility selling it before we could tax it?
I, I think that in order, if we were to have something selling it, in order to tax it, we would have to have the tax on the books.
Oh, okay.
I think. I think that's the way it works.
There's an argument that could be made, Joe, that operators look to communities that have not adopted the tax and try to go there, because they won't have to pay the tax.
Oh, all right.
So for those that don't want that use in town, adopting the tax can serve as a deterrent.
Or it can be the other way around. They have a tax, therefore, we have a better chance of getting a host community agreement, because they have a tax, so that makes them friendly. So it could go either way. It depends on how you think about it, you know, so.
Okay.
I think those are the only ones that I could think of, that I wanted to make sure we had a placeholder for. What about you guys, Joe or Wayne? Anything else that you can think of?
I'll just cover the ones I know about, too.
All right. All right, going back to the agenda, on next meetings. Where are we at with that? I have February 27th, we have a budget meeting on Saturday. I have March, March 2nd, Board of Selectmen meeting.
BOs 32, yeah.
March 13th, another budget meeting, that's a Saturday.
313, yeah.
A regular BOs meeting.
And 3 what?
316, which is a Tuesday. So I have two Tuesday meetings, the second and the 16th, and two Saturday meetings, February 27th and March 13th.
And, Jer, I actually submitted to the clerk's office tonight the postings for all four Saturday meetings, just because the finance committee and the selectmen already agreed on those dates, just to get them up and posted.
All right, thank you.
Did we decide on a time for those?
Yeah, the first one, you'd asked that it be 11 o'clock, so that one's at 11, and the other three are at 10.
The 27th at 11, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I wanted to ask, Jim, do we have an updated budget for this? Were there any decisions made on how we could? I would like to see a budget posted on the, you know, on a Tuesday and a Friday. And my thought on that is so that on Friday, we have a new budget. We're all looking at the same thing on Saturday. And then we, we look at it, make any changes. You have, you know, Monday and Tuesday to make the changes. Sometime on Tuesday, you post again, that we can review. You're still working on it, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
One thing that I'm trying to figure out is the track changes function in Excel. I know that, I know, I saw your face, and that's what my head is doing. But I, I know that Don Hayes, who's on FinCom, said that there's a, a formula that he works with that at least allows him, when he opens up the new document, to see what cells have been changed. Because it's going to be, I would imagine, tiresome for people to, to be looking through and, and try to figure what's been changed since two days ago.
Well, here's a thought. If we were in the budget meeting on Saturday, we'll kind of know. When Tuesday comes around, we'll kind of know, at least those. We might not know anything else. You know, I, I wouldn't want you spending time writing up, oh, we changed this, this, and this. That would be a little crazy-making.
It can be, it can be as simple as each Saturday picking a color. And any changes I make in that following period, I highlight in that color.
That might be the easiest way. And then make it jump out at us. You just have to make everything between versions. We wrote all out, so it's all black, so that it is, we don't need to have, you know, 10 colors. But, you know, we know what the color of the day is. Yeah, so that might be the easiest, my thing.
And I, and I did get a, a bit of a heads up on the school budget that they're rolling out on Monday night.
Right. Oh, I didn't put that one in our meeting schedule.
That they have gone from a 2.39% overall increase to a 2.02% overall increase, which is a further reduction in their overall budget of $450,000. Both Andrew, the town administrator, and Pepperell and I have asked if we could see what that translates into in terms of our actual assessment. 450 in total isn't going to get us near what we're needing to be. Neither will it for Pepperell. Pepperell has made it clear that their current assessment is sitting at around $860,000, higher than last year, and they need it to be between 450 and 475. So that, that 450 that they cut, even if, three quarters of it went to Pepperell, it still wouldn't be enough. So I expect that we'll get, we'll get some information, but it's not the end of the discussion yet on Monday.
So that's another meeting to add to the list, you guys. March 1st at 7:00 PM is the North Middlesex Budget Hearing. And will we all be sent Zooms for that?
As soon as I get it. Yep.
Okay.
Is that going to be, all of us going to be on? Going to be a posted meeting? Is that gonna be, all of us gonna be on? Gonna be a posted meeting?
It is a posted meeting. Oh, for us, you mean?
Yeah.
Um, well, I, I think as long as we don't deliberate, I think it's okay. It's a public hearing. It's the North Middlesex, um, public budget hearing. So I, I don't know.
At 7:00 PM?
If, if three, if a majority of you are going to be there, at least two, and one of you thinks you might say something, I would post just to be conservative.
Yeah, I don't, I, I may make.
I concur.
I will be there. That's all I know. I will be there, so.
Do you mind if I just post, just prophetically, just to?
I think it's fine.
Yep.
To post it. That's probably the safest.
Who's talking?
That's John Page. I am concurring that you should post it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
For, for, for what it's, for what it's worth. I, I, I'm not an attorney, but I play one on TV.
All right.
Sucked it holiday in.
Anything else on this?
No.
Do we move on? All right, so, uh, that takes us to the executive session. So do I have a motion to proceed?
I make a motion that we adjourn the regular Selectmen, uh, workshop meeting to go into executive session pursuit to GLC 30AS 21A3, just discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litig- litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares reference, ax me supervisors. And we will not be returning to open session.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.